To order is March 27. Let me just start by saying that this meeting of the Redding Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners is being broadcast at the RMLD's office at 230 Ash Street, Redding, Mass. Live broadcasts are available only in Redding due to technology constraints. This meeting is being videotaped for distribution to the community television stations in North Redding, Wilmington, and Linfield. I'd like to start the meeting just by reading our code of conduct that we've developed. The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items on the official agenda as well as on items not on the official agenda. We ask that all questions or comments from the public be directed to the Chair and that all parties, including members of the RMLD Board, act in a professional and courteous manner when addressing the Board or responding to comments. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. It is the role of the Chair to maintain order in all public comment or ensuing discussion. Thank you. I'd like to welcome George Hooper from the C A B. And Dennis Kelly, who will be filling in for or taking the place of Tom Olia. Correct. And I'd also like to welcome Hameed Jafari. Did I get that correct? Okay, thank you very much. The newest member of the RMLD family. Welcome. Is there any public comment? If not, let's move on to the approval of the Board Minutes under Tab A. Are there comments on the Minutes?
You want a motion? Want a motion? And then, you want a motion?
Yes, let's have a motion.
Okay, I'll move that we accept the January 29, 2014 minutes as presented.
You have a second? A second? Thank you. Is there any discussion? If not?
I have a question. Should we identify to the public that the Secretary for the Meetings is Secretary Pro Tem?
I'm sorry, you'll have to explain that to me.
Well, it says it's the Secretary for the Meeting.
Yes, I forgot to ask the Secretary for the Meeting.
No, 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 no. That up here, shall we identify as the Secretary Pro Tem?
Oh, yeah, yes.
All right, sure.
Because we don't really have a permanent Secretary.
You're right.
I'll accept that as part of the main motion.
Thank you.
And also at the bottom of the page, to be the same thing, at the where the signature goes.
And we, I'm glad you mentioned that because we also should ask for a Secretary tonight, David, Commissioner Talbot.
Would you like me to be the?
Would you please?
Yes, I would.
Thank you. Are there any other comments relative to the minutes? If not, may I see a show of hands of approval? Okay, I think we're to the General Manager's Report. Ms. O'Brien?
Good evening, thank you, and welcome, Mr. Kelly. The first thing I'd like to discuss is the fiscal year 2015 budgets. As of tomorrow, the budget packets will be going out, and we have a number of meetings set up with the CAB and with the Board themselves. The dates are shown at the bottom of your agenda for the CAB, April 2nd at Linfield Town Hall, and April 9th also at Linfield Town Hall, correct? Where is that, here? Okay, sorry, at the RMLD, and Commissioner Soli will cover these meetings for the Board. Okay? As far as the RMLD Board meetings on the budget, we are looking at Thursday, April 24th, for both the capital and the operating budget, and we are going to start at 5:30. And I believe that meshing the capital and the operating together, as the way the budgets were done this year, is it's integrated, they're separate, but they're integrated as far as if you were to tell a story. I mentioned at the last meeting, some of the changes that I've made to the budget is we went from a one-year focus, even though that's what will be voted on, to a six-year plan. Okay? So everything is very transparent, and that will be very important when we get the reliability study done, because it is, as well as the cost of service study, because it projects out the cost, the revenues, the rates, the capital outlay, system improvements, everything is done in six years, including the year that we're in, which means it'll start off with FY14. In previous budgets, you didn't see what happened in the year before. I want you to see what the previous year budgeted, where we are to date, where we expect to finish. Then FY15 is what you will vote on, and then you'll see 16, 17, 18, and 19. Now, obviously, as things go out, it becomes a little bit more and more of an estimate, but as the reliability study comes in, you'll see we've earmarked different projects. That reliability study may change that somewhat, but we feel pretty confident that we've targeted some of the major areas. Some of the key changes that you'll see in, or focus areas in the budgets that you'll see are updating and completing the GIS system as a basis and foundation for our ability to model the entire electric system for both reliability as well as energy services so that we can target customers for demand response, peak shaving, and things of that, so that we can assess the flexibility and reliability of the system. So you have GIS. The second thing we'll be focusing on is developing a substation maintenance group. This was tried in the past, and it did not work here, but we are going to do it again, and this time it's going to happen. Maintenance has been, as I stated before, the system has been very reactive. We are turning to proactive, and reliability will be enhanced, and we will be training some substation technicians in a five-and-a-half to seven-year program, similar to the line workers, in which all testing will be done in-house, including maintenance. So those are the, basically, the two focus areas. Some key issues of what's being added to the budget that stick out are LED streetlights, and what I heard on the last tour that I made, when we were talking about the rate increase, was that the towns would like to convert to LEDs as a method of saving the energy line items within the town budgets. So we have a pilot program that we're doing. When we go over the budget, we can provide that to you. I'm already trying to stock replacement heads with some LEDs so that we're not carrying anything in inventory that we won't be using in the future, and we're projecting to get it done over probably a two-year period. It's not clear whether or not we can do it in-house or outside consultants, but if you are interested in looking at some of the savings, you can go to Cape Light Compact and look at some of their analysis. We have similar analysis that's in the works, and we just haven't completed it yet, but the whole detail of the LED pilot will be there. But the LEDs themselves across the towns is about $3 million. The savings goes to the energy side. That, you know, it's a lot, but at the same time, that's what a conversion would entail. Okay? The other large value is the master facility site plan. That looks at every facility and every asset of land and structure that RMLD owns to make sure that we are utilizing it in the most efficient means, which means they'll be looking at this building, the buildings next to us, the architectural historic building next door, Station One, you know, how we use our substations' land, we have excess land, it will evaluate all of that. In addition to that, we're looking at the rent that we have with the Barbus Building, Mr. Barbus's father-in-law, who owns the parking lot next door, all of that is going to be evaluated as well, since we pay rent on that. Okay? So we're trying to consolidate our inventory, but we still need a place to store our valuable assets until they are able to be, go out into the field. Okay? So those are kind of a couple of, you know, multimillion-dollar projects that you'll see in there, that I guess they could be a bit of a, you know, what are we doing here? But that's, they're not, they're not cheap to do, but they are necessary to do. And I will tell you that I met with the Town Manager of Redding today, and they are very interested in the economic development and helping us with the economic development in this entire area. And I explained to them that, you know, the RMLD is something you have to care for. It needs to be fed, and we get fed with customers and providing electricity. So we want to be successful, we need to keep the economic development growth with the aesthetics in mind and the citizens of Redding in mind, but we still need to have things evaluated. Make sense to everybody? Great. Okay. The organizational study, if I could move on?
Please.
One question if I may.
Sure.
Just on the, on the LED streetlights, I would just encourage the towns to assess whether you need all the streetlights that you have, because there's often a lot of redundancy out there, that streetlights get put up over the years, and, you know, you can just see, just anecdotally, a lot of places where they're kind of clustered. And you might want to just take back to your boards that there might be an assessment you could do, you can do a luminosity test and see whether you can remove a lot of them so that you're saving that way too, by having fewer of them in the first place.
Good. Just a follow-up on that, too. There was a program that, in terms of, I think Redding shut off some lights, and there was, they actually allowed some of the residents to adopt the lights and pay for the electricity. So I would hope that'd be part of the program.
Sure.
Because some of the, I know when I lived on Copeland Avenue, the light outside the driveway where we parked got shut off. And we actually, my neighbor and I adopted that, that light to keep it on for safety purposes, you know, but we paid for the electricity for that power.
Sure, but that would be up to the three other towns, of course, right, to decide what they want to do, right?
Right. Well, we're starting off very slow. Jane and I and Hameed are going to meet with, we were, we're sending out a letter to each of the CAB members to see if we can meet with the Town Managers and the CAB member to discuss the pilot and to discuss the process of going forward preliminarily, because we haven't gotten approval through the budget yet, but to just let them know where we would be piloting. As we go through the towns, if we, if we move forward, we would be replacing the larger ones, like the 400 watt ones as well, because that's where you get the most savings. But you're absolutely right, the discussion with the towns would be, you know, like North Redding, do you want to keep the every other light, you know, adopt, you know, that you've adopted that program for that town? That works in some towns and not in others.
Right. The only other issue that I have is, I know at one point they shut some lights off, and basically, somebody got hit on Main Street, and the Light Department got sued. So there needs to be some sort of indemnity agreement that the department has with the towns, if they're instructed to turn some of these lights off.
When did that happen? Do you remember? How many years ago was it?
That was maybe 10, 15 years ago.
10 years?
Yeah.
George, do you have a comment?
Well, that kind of led to my point of meeting with the communities, so you could sit with the Town Administrators, and we could go over that. I'm sure this is part of your five-year plan as you're going through it, you're not going to just jump right into this and start doing all these, these communities, but I think that's a positive, something that we should, we should all move to. If we could sit with the Town Administrators, we could find out, highlight some particular areas that we want to get done first, so we can just get these communities done and move forward with them.
Right. It's very slow, it's a pilot first, and again, it has to be approved by the budget. Typically, what happens in a town is you'll, the, the Light Department will have a streetlight policy that's adopted with the town, so if your streetlight policy says that it's every other pole, then, then we would build and service to every other pole. And it may say that in an intersection, that you only have two lights, but if it's a dangerous intersection, it would provide a mechanism for a customer to call and say, "I want that evaluated," and it gets evaluated by the Light Department and then passed over to the Town Manager, because they're paying the electric bill, and we're owning and maintaining the lights. So that, that would be in the agreement, and it would also serve as the indemnification that you're speaking of, but you would have one with each of the towns. I don't know that there's that formality right now, but we would work towards that so that it would be clear to everyone, especially, you know, the employees that work here, what we're doing in each town.
Makes sense? Great. Thank you.
Okay, so the organizational study. The organizational long-term planning and reliability study was held, held for bid since our last meeting. Until such time, our new Director of Engineering and Operations, Hameed Jafari, was able to make his initial assessment of the electric system and its facilities, its operational testing, maintenance, and status, as well as procedures, construction standards, operational, engineering, personnel, and safety. So we had written up the RFP, and then Hameed came, and he has gone through the entire system. We wanted to make sure, you know, we were, we were able to focus it in areas where we knew had been assessed as being more critical than others, so that we would get the most value out of our money. Hameed finished that probably two or three days ago, which was great, because he's only been here three weeks, and he hit the ground running. So thank you for that, Hameed, and so purchasing, we should get that out this week. Everything's completed on it.
Great.
So once the RFP goes out, you can go to the central register and read it if you'd like.
Can we move on to the power supply report? Jane?
While Jane is getting set up there, I do have a quick question about that study.
Yep.
If I may. So the RFP is being drafted by you, or do we see that what your, what your request is first? In terms of what, what we're trying to get studied and what, what the aim of the study is?
I can send you a copy of the request for bid, which writes down the mission statement and of the objectives. It's a combination of an organizational study, studying how you're organized, the number of people we have, the job descriptions, that people are doing what, what they should be doing, the skill sets, the right number of people, and that all gets tied into your reliability and planning study, meaning that you're evaluating the entire system electrically for present and future needs that integrate into like Jane's group for peak demand. So it's looking at not only the reliability and the safety of it in its present day, but what, what will it transform to look into in the future?
Just the electrical system? That sounds like a dumb question, but what I'm getting at is, at some point tonight, I was going to raise the idea that we should at least ask what we're doing with our fiber-optic loop, what its capacity is, how are we monetizing it now?
That's in there.
It is?
Yes.
Is there somewhere else to go with that in the spirit of, you know, expanding our business operations and looking at all ways we can, we can generate revenue? Are we doing enough there? So that's all going to be in there?
Excellent point, yes, that's in there for them to look at it.
Okay. So that'll tie into the six-year plan, I assume, I mean, at least, probably tighter in the early years, and then you'll have to change it as you move.
Well, we would expect that they would give us a report that would lay out the recommended, recommended changes for optimization and efficiency, and lay it out in, in a plan so that we could lay it into the six-year plan, unless there's a bunch of things that have to be done immediately. But Hameed and I didn't really find any smoke and guns, other than the fact that there has been a lack of maintenance on a good amount of the equipment, which we need to get to immediately. Other than that, would you agree?
Yes. If I may add, just one sentence.
Please, go ahead.
It's actually one and a half sentences. I've been doing a little research in this area about what light departments are doing in the state of Massachusetts. It's very interesting. There's about 35 to 40 light departments, right, something like that, and something like 10 or 12 are actually in the business, in the Internet business, and they're, they're all over the map. Some are actually competing head-on with Verizon and Comcast, like pricing, triple-play.
Really?
Yeah, Norwood is.
Yep.
A couple are doing very high-speed Internet, like 100 megabit, Concord. Shrewsbury is as well, and Braintree are doing, they have big systems. Shrewsbury's filling a gap where there is no service, so you know these things. So, but there's, but they're, again, they're all over the map. Like Chickapi Holyoke is doing just for commercial customers, so that you're selling them electricity, but you could also sell them high-speed data for commercial only. So it's just interesting that there are about a quarter to a third of the light departments in this state that are doing this business to some degree or another, and it's, it's a hodgepodge. So it just opens the question of, well, what about us? And A, what are we doing now, and what could we be doing? And if we already have a fiber-optic loop, you know, it's, it's out there. So it's, it's something we really should be looking at.
Yeah, no, that's, that's very interesting. I hadn't, hadn't thought of that. My understanding was there were up to, and maybe perhaps it's Massachusetts and needs to be looked at, but there can be up to two providers per town, and I don't know how the, the legal establishment then deals with like municipals competing with commercial suppliers.
I know a little, I know a little bit about it. Enough to be dangerous.
It's good to have a researcher on.
Well, I mean, I have been looking into this for the past few weeks, and, and the state law authorizes light boards to be in this business, and that's different than the franchise agreements. A lot of towns choose not to because there's already one or two incumbents, and, and it's, oh, boy, can we really do this? Can we really compete?
Right.
And they decide for whatever reason, no. But I don't think there's any reason, there's no legal reason why we can't. In fact, we can.
That's very interesting.
A lot of states you can't, but in Massachusetts you can.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman? There's a wealth of towns who've tried, many have failed. Some have succeeded for multiple reasons. So there's a, as I'm sure you found out, Commissioner, there's a plethora of information out there about what has and has not worked, and I would only caution that the cable business and providing that service is a very unique business unto itself. And so, as the Commission moves forward, as the organization moves forward, it's, there's ample evidence of successes and failures out there.
Sure. I mean, right, and then, and again, there's about 12 in the state that are doing something, and they're all doing different things. So the question is, are they making money at it? And if they are, if they aren't, why are they still doing it? So some of them are making money, and then maybe there's others who've.
Some of them have been doing it, because there's no other provider in the area to service them.
Right.
So the competitive environment changes the dynamic very quickly.
Exactly. So it's complicated.
Yep.
But then again, we know from other conversations that our traditional business is facing pressures from a number of directions over the long haul, and data demands are increasing over the long haul, so just put it out there.
Yeah, just, just a quick one. I feel like Yogi Bear, this is deja vu all over again. This is another, we're having a discussion about this again, and this, this discussion has been had on this, on the commission level several times over the years.
Okay.
The only thing, and I think every time we go off, we'd said, okay, now, what, what are we actually good at? And come back to that. I mean, we should, Alan Ames once said, "We're in the wire business."
Sure.
You know, and that's, you know, we should.
Sometimes businesses reinvent themselves, too.
Well, they could, they could. I mean, maybe it's, you know, the technology is different now, and, you know, I don't disagree, maybe it's something to go look at again.
I, I don't think it hurts to consider the alternatives, and, and you're absolutely right.
Well, Dave's going to pick the cable channels first.
That's right. The cable channels, but you're, I mean, the core competency is delivering electricity. There are different forms of electricity, and.
Right.
And you're right, should we or should we not be in it? I'm not sure. I, I do think it opens up the discussion, though, for, with our demand decreasing for many different reasons, how do we then identify things, not just on the cost reduction side, because everyone looks to that, well, your demand's going down, you could, you have to reduce your costs as well, and you can only do that so far with a fixed-cost environment that we're in. I think on the other side, though, is how do you increase demand in our four-town area? And that may be, you know, trying to find server farms, or people who are intensive electricity users, like analog devices is a perfect example, right? I mean, they're integrated circuit manufacturer. So if we can find and, and draw people to our four-town area, because we've got some of the lowest electricity rates in there, that makes a substantial difference, I think we ought to be getting, beginning to explore who those companies might be, because when you're trying to find a competitive advantage, even as, as a municipality or a group of municipality, there's no reason we shouldn't take advantage of that wherever we can, and it brings jobs, it brings new businesses in, and it may be Wilmington, it may be North Redding, Linfield, I'd like to say Redding, but we don't have a lot of land left, you know, to develop a lot of these, but I think we ought to consider that certainly as part of the, the six-year plan, and how do we get a proactive program together to find more demand?
Sure.
Not necessarily, you know, do the less-cost thing, obviously, be efficient as much as we can. So I applaud the idea of the Internet, I mean.
Sure, and yours is, and so would, would this, would the study take into account what, what John just said?
No, it, the study takes into account looking at the existing fiber loop, and all of the ways that Redding Light can use its own loop for communication beyond just the metering system and the fixed network system, and we also do rent-out sections of, of it. So we are making some, some money on the ownership of that. So they'll look at ways that RMLD can, can better utilize the fiber loop, and if there is some economic value to it beyond that, they can let us know. I mean, we did a study as well at the last utility, and unless you didn't have an overbuild, meaning like in Shrewsbury, where you had no system, then you had a value in, in its own cable system. So you just got to be really careful, because there are a number of them where the technology changes so quickly in the head end, and you have to have a substantial amount of people that are specialized in that area in order to keep that up. And I'm, like, how fast is your Internet at home? You get the fastest, I'm sure, right?
No, I don't.
Really good, you'd like the fastest.
I'm paying an arm and a leg for.
There we go. We all are, yes.
Our data bills are a lot higher than our electric bills, let's face it, so that tells you something about where the money's being made these days.
I know, I just tried to unbundle my cable, Internet, and phone by shutting off my phone and cable, and my, my Internet was just as high. It was like, well, we were giving you your cable and your TV for free, you know, and your telephone for free.
It tells you something.
Yeah.
They have, they have margins in 90%, so they're making big money on it, and, yeah. I just hope the study takes a hard look at this, and.
But what John.
We don't, we don't assume that this is, oh, this can't be done, or we don't know how to do it, or.
Well, what John is speaking about is the development of the economic, this economic development team.
Understood.
And the town has one, but I, when I spoke to the Town Manager today, we're looking to put together a team of perhaps residents that have this type of expertise, so that we can really target and help with the marketing, and as well, our key accounts person is being replaced with a marketing-focused engineer that will also help us to keep and attract new customers.
It's a huge asset.
Huge asset.
I think that's, I think that's a great initiative. I think anything we can do to support the towns, who may or may not have the competence to develop serious economic development plans.
Right.
If we can support them in that effort, that's a, that's a great approach.
Do, do all the towns have economic development committees? George, you know it, does Wilmington have one, for example?
I believe so, yes.
So is there any kind of coordination between the towns?
That's why I'm, I'm starting with the Town Manager of Redding to ask, and, and perhaps there could be a team put together that's, you know, a specialist from each town, that we can focus on economic development, on marketing, and customer, you know, retaining customers and attracting new customers specifically for RMLD, and specifically for, for larger commercial. I think Priscilla does a great job, and Key Accounts does a great job on the smaller commercials in that community chamber network.
Sorry, Jane.
Good evening, I'm here to report on the February purchase power summary. RMLD's energy for the month came in at 55.02 megawatt-hours, a million megawatt-hours, which represents a 2.2 increase when we compare that to February of 2013. Our energy costs for the month came in at 3.38 million, and that's equivalent to a little over six cents per kilowatt-hour. The February fuel charge was set at five cents per kilowatt-hour, and our sales totaled 57.62 million kilowatt-hours. That resulted in the department under-collecting by approximately $676,000, leaving the deferred fuel cash reserve at a month-end balance of $935,000 approximately. The March fuel charge was increased to five and a half cents, and the projected deferred fuel cash for the fiscal year has an ending balance of approximately $3 million. So we were able to drop it towards the end of the year, and then as gas prices have gone up, we have to ramp up to, to recover those costs. Table 2 shows that the RMLD purchased approximately 9.3% of our energy requirement from the spot market, at an average cost of $139 per megawatt-hour. Table 3 looks at capacity. RMLD's peak demand for February was approximately 106 megawatts, and that peak occurred on Thursday, February 13th, at 7:00 PM. This compares to a peak demand a year ago, about 105 megawatts, and it occurred on February 4th, again at 7:00 PM. Our monthly capacity requirement, as a result of the previous year's peak, was 215 megawatts, and the total capacity dollars expended in February totaled $1.47 million, or a little under $7 per kilowatt-month. If we look at Table 4, it shows both the capacity and the energy, as well as the generation for, in kilowatt-hours. The February costs for capacity and energy were approximately 8.83 cents per kilowatt-hour. And in February, 7.6% of RMLD's energy was purchased from hydro generation. Moving on to Table 5 is our rec, is our rec table. Table 5 lists the four hydro projects that the RMLD receives renewable energy certificates from. The table indicates that RMLD has sold approximately 13,000 vintage 2013 recs, for a total of approximately 700. $727,000. From January 2013 to date, which includes February, the first three quarters of 2013. The RMLD estimates that it will receive an additional $178,000, with projected sales of about 5,600 recs, and those are quarter-four 2013 recs. And that's, those need to be retired or sold by June of 2014. So the total rec revenue is estimated to be about $905,000 for this period. Moving on to table six, the transmission, our cost for transmission for the month of February came in at $912,000 approximately, and that's about a 12 percent increase when you compare it to February of 2013. Tables seven and eight, which is the energy efficiency, we processed eight commercial rebates in the month of January and February totaling $65,898. This brings the fiscal year '14 total to approximately 200, a little under 204,000 on the commercial side. RMLD calculates the capacity savings to be about 729 kilowatts, and the energy savings totaling 2,096 megawatt hours. On the residential side, to date, the RMLD has processed 828 appliance rebates totaling a little over $40,000. And there's been 264 RMLD customers that have received energy audits, and those totaled about $52,000.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Solon?
Jane, in the last month's Purchase Power Summary, energy had an interesting number in it. The ISO interchange was like negative a million dollars. And I see on the financials, it resulted in a NIPA credit of like $176,000. But I also recall at the meeting, I asked, because I was curious how that negative million dollars would affect the NIPA credit, to see an explanation of the credit for January.
For January.
Yeah. Is that possible sometime in the future?
Yeah, we can get that for you. I believe Bill had indicated to you that there's a two-month lag in the NIPA credit. So the February and the March, so the March, the February credit is a result of December's purchase power. So I will get you the analysis of that. It doesn't take into consideration, this negative credit in January was a result of our ownership in Stony Brook. Because that plant ran in real time, we actually received additional revenue for that.
Oh, I understand that. I was just curious how all that melded in.
Yep.
Now, here we have the February financials, that NIPA credit is due to what month of purchase power?
The, I was just working on this, the March credit will be a result of the January. So February is a result of December purchase power.
Ah.
So there's a two-month lag.
So we have not yet seen the...
The January credit, I just did a preliminary one with Bob, I think that came out to be about $312,000. And we haven't received February yet.
Okay. So if you could do that, I'd appreciate it.
I'll be happy to provide that to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
You're welcome.
Could move on to the Engineering and Operations Report, Mr. Jafari?
Good evening.
Hello.
I'd be more than happy to go over the operating engineering and operations report for February, starting with the system projects, project 101, 5W9 reconductoring, Wildwood District in Wilmington, 5 percent completed. This project calls for reconductoring 7,000 second feet of 336 spacer cable to 795, started FY 2014, and will continue through FY 2016 for three years. There's two parts to that, underground upgrade and also the overhead upgrade, both. As we speak, the crews are, have engaged in upgrading the overhead. The underground portion is going to be completed in May 2014. Project number 102, that's 4W4 reconductoring, that also is calling for replacing 5,500 second feet of 336 spacer to 795. And the reason for doing that, to increase the circuit capacity for loading and both flexibility in switching from 10 MVA to 15 MVA. This project is delayed due to the manpower, and some of these projects that you see, the reason that they're delayed is because you're trying to maintain the system. And, you know, we've got the aged equipment all over, as I was discussing with Colleen about the, one of the contents in the system reliability study, which is, that's my area of expertise. I recommend that to go do a thorough study on the aged equipment and developing the required maintenance program in order to keep up. It's like bypass surgery, you're trying to keep the patient alive while you're doing the bypass. So that's basically what's happening over here for the projects that you see that are delayed, or they're going to be delayed. So because maintenance keeps, gets a priority over new construction. So project 103, now it's talking about upgrading the old Linfield Center. There are three areas, three subdivisions in the Linfield Center that they've got aged equipment, meaning the underground cable as, and also the transformers, the life front transformers, which is old technology, and it's kind of outdated. One is 1,000 in Needham Road, it started FY 12 and finished in FY 13. The other one is Throg Holly, which is started in FY 13 and was completed in August of 2013, which is FY 14. And now the crews are working on a Cook's Farm that started FY 2014, and it's going to be done by September 2014. And these three areas, all the aged infrastructure is going to be replaced with the new equipment. This is again preventative maintenance in order to prevent a failure.
We talked about a little bit this in previous work, I think, as well, in terms of like testing transformers and whatnot. I don't know if you've gotten that far.
Well, we got, that's another thing that we're instituted, the new transformers that they're coming in, before they actually, they're being installed, they need to be tested. And, you know, to make sure, first of all, we've got a good product, and then we install them, so we eliminate any chance of transformer failure, or infant stage. So, or when you install it, you just want to make sure, you know, everything is safe and sound, for both worker's safety and also the public's safety.
Yeah, I was referring more to the aged transformers that are already out there.
Right.
Because, you know, up until recently, you know, the transformer would fail, then you'd replace it, right? It was reactive, as opposed to a proactive type of program.
Exactly. Right. And the study that we did, it shows approximately 50 percent of the transformers in the system are aged, meaning age, the average life expectancy for a transformer is between 15 to 20 years.
I'm feeling very aged.
If you're doing, yes.
Yes, right.
Anything over 20, you're pushing it. So basically, those transformers, we have to schedule them and phase them out, obviously in the order of the oldest to, up to 20 years.
Yeah.
And that's one of the issue, that's one of the issues that we're working on, part of the programs, preventative maintenance programs that we're working on. They call it Transformer Load Management. And like what Colleen said, in order to do that, you need to have a good engineering model, and also you need to integrate that model with the loading information.
Right.
And then once you know, then you know how much load each transformer is carrying, and then you can do the life cycle analysis to see if the transformer is loaded 100 percent and the normal condition, it's going to give you 20 years, maybe less, 18 years. Anything over 100 percent, now you're cutting down the life expectancy in exponential, you know...
Right. Thank you. Good.
Just briefly, for my edification, my simple brain says transformer has no moving parts, so it says, what's the break? What is the failure mechanism?
Well, there are two elements to that. One is the load on the transformer, the cyclic load, you know? The transformers, sometimes they're overloaded, depending on the load. If it's overloaded, it's putting stress on the windings of the transformer. The other thing is the paper insulation, and the insulation of the transformer, over the time, the heat, you know, it's degrading the paper.
Really?
There's actually mechanical stress in transformers.
Right, it is.
Yeah.
And then that's, once they start failing, then it's shorted out. And rust, obviously, the rust in the casing of the transformer, that, you know, all of a sudden you have southern oil release, and that's one of the main concerns, because we don't want to have environmental catastrophe.
So there's actually moving parts, but it's just minuscule amount.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chairman, just a, could I?
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. Again, I guess this is education night, the, is there a way that we will calculate whatever the remaining value of the life is of a transformer or equipment as we swap it out? In other words, you know you've exhausted the value if the thing fails on you...
Yeah, that's right.
But you're making some calculations about what value there's left in it versus swapping it out. Will we capture that number in some way?
Yes, once you do the load analysis, and you know the load of the transformer, there are curves, the life cycle curves, that you can do the back calculation and see that, you know, well, if the normal transformer with 100 percent load is good for 20 years, now if it's 120 percent, what is the life, so how much life you're cutting down from the transformer? Which is going back to, believe it or not, that 10 percent, that 20 percent relates to, you're cutting down the life expectancy to anywhere between three to five years.
Right.
Depending on the condition of the transformer.
So we'll be able to capture some of the value that remains in that, so we understand what the cost benefit is of going?
And plus, these transformers are inefficient, you know, the efficiency rating on the transformer goes anywhere from 96 percent to 98 percent. Now with the new DOE's recommendation and mandate, now you're going to have to go to 99 percent efficiency. Which once you do that, then you're going to cut down the losses, which is energy saving for the utility.
Right.
That's another reason behind Transformer Load Management. Any utility with a good practice, maintenance practice, you know, it's a common sense to do. And, you know, to, as the transformers, they age, and they depreciate it over the 15 years to 20 years, now you upgrade them, you make them more efficient, and that would be same as, you know, like green energy, that you save money by using that.
Chairman, may I ask?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Dave, are you asking is that we would replace something that still had value? Is that what your concern is?
I'm just trying to, I'm trying, not that you would replace something that has value, in other words, I have no, I have no questions about the value of being proactive.
Right.
But do we understand what the cost benefit is of swapping something out that may have...
I think what Hamid is saying is, once we get the GIS built, and we're able to take in the information from customer service for the load that's connected to that transformer, there's such, the industry provides curves that are predictive. So, you know, especially with the lack of maintenance and how many transformers that haven't been inspected, we don't want to replace anything we don't have to either. So we'll be using predictive curves, but we want to be a little on the conservative side to prevent what happened in Wilmington. Because one spill, you know, you could have replaced for 150,000, you could have replaced a lot of transformers.
So the data that we've been talking about capturing is the data that will drive those decisions, so that we're pushing it up to the optimum operating...
Exactly. It's a predictive curve for the insulation, and they got it down to a science, you can always tell you, okay, Thursday at 3:00, it's going.
So we'll all know which pole...
When Phil turns on his razor.
Yes, that's perfect. That's, thank you.
They've got it down to a science, it's pretty good.
Yep, that's great.
Yeah, actually, to elaborate a little bit more on it, and that would be, when, once you integrate that system with the AMR, AMI would be better than AMR, but with the AMR, once the loading starts to be transferred to the database, what you could do, you could do the back calculations and see that, you know, exactly, with this type of loading, we estimate the transformer to go in 18 years, 10 days, 20 days.
Yeah.
And every year, you have a list of the ones that you know, well, oh, be mindful that these transformers are due for upgrades.
I think that's great.
And based on that, then you can move on. That's the strategy we're going to be using for our assets, for asset management.
Excellent.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on to project 105, that's 4W5, 4W6 tie, this is the tie, this is the project that is going to enhance and increase the capability of switching between the feeders and swapping load during the peak period. That calls to install 1,500 second feet of 556 spacer and replace it by seven, installing seven, 556 spacer, which is going to provide additional capacity for switching. Currently, we're waiting for Verizon to set poles, that's why this is moving a little bit too slow, we're not right now at 10 percent. Project 106, that's URD upgrades all over town. There are 244 URD communities in RMLD's service territory. 65 of those, they are over 25 years old. That means the cable and the transformers, and we need to upgrade those. And this was, the transformers are 1995 vintage, pretty much there's no life left to them, and this is another thing that you're going to have to, you know, be proactive. So this is on the top of my list, definitely, as a preventative maintenance, to make sure the customers, they don't suffer any unnecessary outages. So these transformers, very inspected, and they're identified that there's a need for their replacement. There are 12 that has been completed to date. By June 2014, we're going to increase that to 30, 30 of the transformers, and then we're going to move on, you know, time permitting. My plan is to dedicate some, you know, some of the crews, maybe one or two, for just to keep up with the maintenance routinely. So that's what the plan is, that's how we're going to go. Project 107, step-down areas, there are about 32 step-down areas in RMLD service territory. These areas are 30-plus years old, again, the aged infrastructure, and we're going to upgrade them before they can be converted. Currently, the crews are working on Vine Street in Reading to that, in order to convert it to 138, which is the higher voltage and lower losses. This is ongoing. Station upgrade, station four, the relay replacement, we've got about 14, 15 KV feeders that the relays are electromechanical, they've been replaced to solid-state relays, that is state-of-the-art, and this is going to be, this is going to be done, unfortunately, it has to be delayed because of the lack of manpower. And as Colleen mentioned, as soon as we form the technical services group, then that's going to provide man, we train them, that's going to be more of, they provide the manpower necessary in order to get some of these projects done. Station four, Gaug, 35 KV PTs, there are six 35 KV PTs, those are potential transformers that they need to be replaced, and they should be completed by FY 14. This is going to be done right now, about 5 percent completion. This is going to be done fairly soon. As soon as we get the rest of the equipment, they're tested, we're going to replace these. There's also the service at the station, there's project number 110, the station three replacement of service cutouts, these are parted porcelain cutouts, there's six of them, that they need to be replaced, and once we replace them, they're going to be equipped with an animal guard as well for protection. This project should be completed in FY 14 as well. So right now, it's at 10 percent. Project 111, station four, Gaug, getaway replacements, again, these projects calling for replacing 17 hundred second feet of underground cable to 750. These are either 1,000 MCM aluminum or 500, which the rating is lower than the 750, that's going to increase the circuit capacities from 10 MVA to 15 MVA, which is more load than, it's going to lower the losses, because of the lower resistance. This project is going to be completed in April of 2014. Project 125, that's station five, getaway replacements, 5W9, 5W10... Project 125, that's the station five getaway replacements, 5W9, 5W10, both undergrounds, they're gonna have to be upgraded to 750 MCM copper. And we got some overhead work that it's involved in this project. And crews currently are working on 5W9 out of the station five in order to upgrade the cables and move on. So, that's what they're working on now. SCADA, station three, RTU. RTU is the remote terminal unit, which is basically collecting data from all the relays in the substation, and it's gonna transmit it to the SCADA for processing, data processing. These are old and they need to be upgraded to Schweitzer solid-state relays. And this project's gonna be completed in FY2015. Any questions before I move on to the next, the new customer service informations?
I didn't realize we had so many old things.
[laughing]
Apparently, we do. Okay.
The new customer service connections, the service installations for the commercials, industrial customers. Basically, this project in February included North Reading middle and high school, the service upgrade. In FY14, year-to-date, we spent $27,202. In February, we spent about $4,258. The same thing for the service installation for the, for the residential customers. Year-to-date, we spent about $151,057. And in February, we spent about $7,704. These are all the new upgrades for the service drops from the main line to the houses, whether overhead or underground. It doesn't include any pole upgrades or the transformers. These are accounted in a separate, for the, either routine construction or part of the capital authorization projects. The routine constructions from July 2013 to February 28, these are the year-to-date basically figures. Under the maintenance of pole transfers and settings, you have the number 256,218. Maintenance of overhead and underground, these are the primaries, secondaries, and pad mount transformers, bolts, and connectors, and tapes. Projects as assigned as required, these are some of the capital authorization projects carried over from FY13, like 4W13, overhead reconducting of West Street in Wilmington, and Essex Street reconducting, that was completed in September 2013. And also, the 128 tire Reading service upgrade, and 98 Ames Street Wilmington service upgrade. Pole damage knockdowns, we had about $9,000 of that in February. Station group, that's some of the labor work you see, the hazmat, oil spill. We spent about $49,570 in July 2013 spill on Houghton Road in Wilmington. Also, we spent about $2,269 in North Reading at Angelwood Road for the transformer spill, oil spill. The porcelain cutout replacement program, this is something that, you know, we need to actively pursue as part of the proactive maintenance. And right now, we are identifying more of those because about 50% of the cutouts captured, the other 50%, they need to be replaced because these are the ones that they fail and they shatter, and they could cause potential reliability issues. Lighting, street lighting connections, approximately $17,000 for private lighting connections, light connections. Storm troubles, we had July, in July, we spent about $6,451 for heat-related issues. In November, about $4,000. Underground subdivisions, the new constructions, Longwood Estates, Reading, Amherst Road in Wilmington, Johnson Woods in Reading, McRain Road in Wilmington, and that totals up to 112,541. The animal guard installation, installations, we had $7,000 of that spent in February. And that's another thing that we beefing up basically as a proactive maintenance program in order to avoid any animal contact. Please minimize that to the best we can.
Does that tie directly to the pie charts that you've got on the next page?
Yes.
With the wildlife? I mean, that's a major drop in the wildlife, yeah?
Which I thought that, you know, this pie chart, this is the new, and I'm gonna explain that this is a better representation of, so you could see what's really causing these failures and outages.
Sure.
Which I'll get to that. Miscellaneous capital costs, these are the trouble man patrols, and inventory, and line operations, general foreman salary, Itron fixed network, pad mount transformer that struck by car, $5,400 of that, and general ledgers adjustments for $57,680. Basically, that's what it comprised. And total year-to-date spending on those is $1,237,339. Any questions? So I can move on to the next. System reliability. You see, this is a different presentation of the system reliability. What the, in the past, the graph's been, you know, presenting, actually, we were competing against ourselves, which that's not the good representation. What we try to do, we try to compare ourselves, our reliability, to the national and regional. So what you see on the blue, it's a region, regional average. And what you see in the pink or brown, light brown, that you see the national average. And system average interruption duration index from 2010 to 2014, I like to do five-years comparison, so you see, you know, which directions we are heading.
So it's a rolling average you use?
That's right. And then, these are the ones that, you know, well, at least you could see their reliability, whether you're getting better. Although, I gotta warn you that, you know, one big storm could throw these numbers off the chart. So, it's not, it's good. If you continuously, without any major issues, major events, they should be going down. Otherwise, with one big storm that hits one community more, and then make more damages than the other community, you're gonna see these numbers, they could go up and down. So.
Are the regional averages and the national averages, five-year rolling averages too?
No, these regional, unfortunately, these data, not too many utilities, they would like to give this data, provide this data. This data is issued by APPA. This is for 2013. So, if everybody participates in that program, which is a great thing, they're anonymous, this is anonymous, you know, they're not gonna mention any utility, they go by the region, and you can compare yourself against that region. But unfortunately, not too many utilities, they provided data for various reasons. And the ones that they do, then this is what the national average for New England area been at least. So we have
So this would suggest we're doing extremely well relative to the regional or national?
Well, that's, yes. However, there are some areas of concern. I'm concerned about the age of the equipment, like what I said, and that's the biggest hurdle in the reliability. If anything fails, you know, that's why we need to focus more on preventative maintenance. And I'm developing that program, and that I'm gonna give you a presentation. Hopefully, you're gonna see that, you know, what those programs will be, and what are the areas that we need to concentrate. So first, we need to fix that, keep the reliability, and then, you know, on the same, parallel, there's a parallel processes. You need to maintain the reliability and build your infrastructure and, you know, add more
Sure.
To the system. So the system average interruption from 2010 to 2014, see that, you know, well, it's going fairly well. S A F E, that's system average interruption frequency. So, frequency of the outages, you see that, you know, they go some years up, some years down. But overall, again, you're below the regional average and the national average for now. The customer average interruption duration index, as you could see over here again, we are below the national average of 83 minutes, and the regional average of 105.77. See, New England has been experiencing more storm and more scattered outages. That's why the number for region is higher than the national. So, basically, that concludes the reliability indices. The next page, you're gonna see two charts, the causes of outages. So we wanna know what's really contributed to, to the frequency and duration of the outages. And these are, as you could see in the pie chart, the 28% of that relates to the trees, 27% wildlife, and the rest basically are equipment, whether it's cable service, or cutouts, or transformers, or, and basically, that's the, that shows the aging of, you know, the equipment, and the issue that, you know, well, we're dealing with. Part of it, it shows over here, part of it is probably still hidden, and it would
Sure.
Over the period of years, you're gonna see that, you know, that probably
So it really does show that the equipment is becoming a larger percentage of the total
Exactly.
Issues. On, if you, if you wouldn't mind, on perhaps future charts, could you also put like the, the number of outages, just for them? Because percentages always kinda give you
Yes.
A funny thing. Was it on this one?
And on this one, on 2014, I tried to do that.
Yes.
And what we did, we give you the number of outages as well as the percentage. But by all means, that would be a great idea. I will include that so you see how many, how many of those relate to the particular outages. But if that's the format that you, the board prefers to see, by all means, we will provide that.
Do you have any other comments on?
I'm looking for input.
I think it's a nice readout. Great.
Sure, we'll do that. If you don't have any questions, that concludes my presentation.
I'd just like to add, can I, may I add one more comment?
Please, go ahead.
When you look at the reliability indices and you say, wow, we're doing really well, and we are. But as Hamid said, the assessment is, there's a large majority of equipment that's of the same age, which is reaching the end of its useful life. So, that's why we can't keep going this way. Because what started to happen in Wilmington, in that subdivision, in that aged subdivision, so there was five transformers, one of them had a major failure, one of them had a minor failure, and we pulled three more of them out, that if we hadn't caught them probably that week, they were going. And what happens is, they generally fail all at the same time. We are trying to stay ahead of that. Okay? I just don't want people to misunderstand that, wow, the reliability will just keep going the way we're going. We're not gonna do any maintenance, this looks great. This isn't gonna last. It's a good thing that we're, you know, being proactive now. You know, I don't think we're being over proactive. I think we're addressing it now before there's a failure that's too big, or it's happening all over in different, and we just physically don't have enough people to address it all at the same time. So, I just want people to understand that.
Yeah. Great, thank you. Bob? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, I'll be presenting the February financials, which represent the first eight months of this fiscal year. Looking at page three, the net loss for the month of February was $235,000, which brings that year-to-date net loss to about $930,000. We had budgeted income of a little over $3 million, resulting in that income being in the budget by almost $4 million. The actual year-to-date fuel expenses exceeded fuel revenues by about $1.7 million. So the bulk of this loss is due to the difference in the fuel revenue and fuel expense. And as Jane said previously, with the deferred fuel balance down around a million, we're hoping to get it up to around three. That'll help offset the losses that we're showing right now, and should put us in good position by fiscal year-end. Looking at the revenues on page 11B.
We just test that.
No, we had it, we had it.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Looking at the revenues on page 11B, the year-to-date base revenues are in the budget by $1.6 million, or about 5%. The actual base revenues came in at $31.3 million, compared to the budgeted amount of $32.9 million. On the expense side, found on page 12A, the year-to-date purchase power base expense was over budget by about $135,000, or a little less than 1%. The actual purchase power base costs were at $19.5 million, compared to the budgeted amount of $19.4. On the operating and maintenance side, expenses combined are under budget by about $143,000, or about 1.5%. The actual operating and maintenance expenses came in at $8.4 million, compared to the budgeted amount of $8.5 million. Appreciation expense and the voluntary payments to the four towns are on budget. On the cash side, page nine, operating fund is at $12,600,000. Even though it looks a little gaudy, if you look at the payables, due to the timing, our payables are a little higher, so when you net it all out, the operating fund is pretty much where it should be. Capital fund balance is at $4.4 million, rate stabilization is at $6.7 million, deferred fuel is at $935,000, and the energy conservation fund is at $422,000. On the general information side, looking at page five, year-to-date kilowatt-hour sales were at $475 million, which is about 9 million kilowatt-hours, or about 2% behind last year's actual figure. The GAW revenues collected year-to-date were $475,000, which brings the total collected since inception to about $2.5 million. On the budget variance side, cumulatively, the five divisions came in under budget by about $140,000, or about 1%.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you, Bob. So I believe we're up to the chapter 30B bids?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, this is the landscape bid summary, basically, that I'm gonna give you. The existing vendor, Eagle Landscape, was terminated for performance issues. Okay, and it was a three-years contract, starting April 2013, and the contract was terminated in February 24, 2014. The new bid went out, and there were 19 bidders. Out of the 19 bidders, three of them, they responded. And out of the three bidders, one was the most responsive bidder, and that was the Earthworks Landscaping Corporation. And the total bid was for $132,311. The core contract was for $106,000, which actually is a good amount for this type of contractor services. And the supplemental units were $25,476. The core, the core of the contract is fall and spring cleanup, and the weekly maintenance, and lawn care, and brushing. The supplementals are for grass seedings, labor rates, irrigation systems, anything that might come necessary in order to perform. So my recommendation is to award the bid to Earthworks Landscaping for the amount of $132,311. And I would like to
So just, just
Get approval from the vote, from their board.
May I have a motion?
Yeah, great. Okay. I'll move the bid 2014-19 for groundkeeping and landscaping services be awarded to Earthworks Landscaping Company, Inc. for $132,311 as the lowest qualified and responsive bidder on the recommendation of the general manager.
Second, please.
Second.
You. Discussion. I just like, to make a comment, a lot of people were approached. Three responded, and two didn't fill it out correctly. So, it seems, it went down to one bidder, basically.
Actually, I asked that question, and I asked from my supervisor, Dave Paulson. And some of them, they didn't bid due to their insurance requirements.
Right.
5% bond was too much for some, so they didn't wanna bid. And some, the properties were larger. They said, that's, you know, what is it, too much of a property for us. And some was scheduling work at off-site locations would be difficult to manage. So these are the reasons that they said that, you know, they didn't wanna bid.
Sure.
And that the three that the bidder, two of them, David J. Lennon and Sons, and also William Dunn Landscaping, they did not confirm to our requirements, and they didn't fill out their paperwork properly, and they didn't respond to some of the itemized section that, you know, requested, and the rates, they didn't provide. So the only person who provided all those documents collectively as requested was Earthworks.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion?
Just one question. What landscaping are we doing here, this campus and what else? Or is this it?
That's for, oh, the substations, weeding. This is gonna be the parking lot cleaning, landscaping, mulching, mowing, substation weeding, and also the brush controls around the fence lines.
Does this include the snow removal as well, or is that something separate? Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
The snow removal is us. We plow, and then our rented property out back, we share that plow. Mr. Barbus was asked to help us this past year because we had a snow mound that was actually taking up too much physical space, and he had a backhoe to, you know, help clear the snow. So
Certainly a unique winter.
It was a unique year.
So, no surprise.
Yes.
Any other discussion? If not, could I see a show of hands for approval? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any general discussion items that anyone would like to discuss?
Yeah, just one item.
Go ahead.
I wanna... Since Mr. Menkusel's final meeting here, so thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
We all do. Thank you very much, David.
It's been a pleasure serving with you all. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you, Phil.
If there's no other discussion, may I have a motion to move into executive session?
Move that the board go into executive session to approve the executive session minutes of January 29, 2014, to discuss mitigation and union negotiation update, and return to regular session for the sole purpose of the chairman.
Second, please.
Second.
May I have a roll call?
You meant mediation, right?
Mediation.
Isn't that what I said?
May I have a roll call?
Lucky I just said meditation, you know?
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone.